6:00 PM, joining me is DPW Subcommittee County Counsel Monday, March 14th, in the Rights Conference Room. Call it order roll call is Assistant Number Cody.
President.
Assistant Number Lozal.
President.
Counselor Daniel.
President.
Counselor Shanier.
President.
Counselor Adams. Number three, I haven't done. Number four, review, discuss DPW transfer request, $10,000 from account number 001499-511000. Salaries permanent. Yeah, permanent. Permanent. To account 001499-511000. Overtime to cover additional overtime. There's storms. It's time later.
I'll defer to Rich. He took this forward requesting some money to make sure he makes it to the end of the year with overtime. We've had some storms and not storms.
Well, storms.
This is DPW.
DPW, yeah.
So.
But not stormy nights.
We used a significant amount of overtime during the road construction project last summer. I was kind of surprised to see there's only $10,000 in the kitty for corporate type payments for the guys. It's less than $1,000 per person. Kind of goes away pretty quick. Maybe they didn't really use that much in the past. I'm not really sure. Depending on what they did throughout the several months. But we've spent that money plus some. We need to try to put some back so we're not negative in that.
A little bit of due attention should be by the little bit this year. So that.
We're discussing that.
Thank you.
Is that enough company to be running the year?
I hope so.
You noticed the $750,000 in the company you took to the town.
Yes.
Is that the wages in salary account?
Yes.
All right, discussion. Anybody? Counselor Marquess.
Mr. Chairman, so last year you had $10,000. You spent about $7,500, something like that. So this year you have $10,000, but you're looking at $10,000.
So last year would have been when I, for most of the time that I did work here. And now we're doing things. So if they expect to back out of the day, so it's going to cost a little bit more over time.
Okay.
So a lot of this went to, we had an employee that was working on the Ellison Road project. A lot of that money went there. We're hoping to not have that situation again. But we're also got a lot of things that are starting to move in town. So we're definitely going to have some overtime.
End of discussion. All in favor? Post and number five. Review, discuss the five-year renewable wastewater contract between the Towne Southrings and Viola Water. Notification to proceed into second. The second to five-year term needs to be issued six months before November 30th, 2024. Contract expires. Before I ask for our motion, the next agenda item talks about DPW Director's recommendation to rebid wastewater contract for the Towne Southrings. Should those be flipped around or do we want to?
No, we want to talk about both of them right now. It's the same, the same item. So it's just, one is the, you want to do a motion or?
So move.
Second, all right. Well, I'm in my discussion.
Yeah, this is just a discussion part, you're right. So the motion, there really is no motion for this one. This was really a discussion. It could have been one motion, you're right. There came over as two. So Rich and I have had extensive conversations about the sewer treatment plant, the operation of sewer treatment plant, some of the issues that Rich has had over the year that he's been here, that he's been able to evaluate Viola in their contract. And this would give us an opportunity to see what else is out there in the operation of that facility. We, I'll let Rich go over what he's seen as DPW Director. But we do see some issues that we have worked and Rich especially has worked. We've had numerous meetings that I've been involved with, principals from Viola, and Rich has been meeting with them very regularly to address a lot of the concerns that we have as a town with the operation of that facility. This would give us an opportunity rather than wait another five years before we have another chance at, or if we decide not to go back out, if we choose not to go up and we have continual problems, then to try to get out of the contract would be more costly than trying to rebid it at this time and see what's out there. So I'll defer the rest to Rich.
So we kind of started putting together a list of pain points for what's going on currently with our wastewater. We started off by going through their contract. There's a lot of green highlights in here for things that they're not doing that's associated with the responsibilities in the contract. So most of, what started this was obviously, everybody's aware that there's been some concerns about how the department runs and there's a lot of money in project accounts. Things aren't getting spent, stuff not getting done. Typically, if you see that things aren't moving, it brings up questions about why is it not moving? And then what else isn't moving? So I finally got to the point in my career here where I got my feet on the ground and started to look into some of this stuff. We started off by calling out some of the issues that weren't agreeable by myself. And that led to some meetings and then we were having biweekly meetings regarding how they were doing things and what they were doing and what they should be doing. Never, I asked a lot of questions, never got really much for answers, got a lot of redirection, a lot of kind of hopes and dreams, but never anything solid. So that was even prior reading their contract. Then I read their contract and I highlighted everything that I can see that they're not hearing. One of the questions that I brought up to them was, we're talking about order. There's money in accounts set up to try to figure out what we can do to address the order that comes from the plant. That is a huge concern and I know it to pretty much anybody that drives through Southbridge, let alone residents. I found some issues that could be addressed with probably reasonable costs that I haven't gotten any answers on. I've gotten a lot of ups, trying to upsell me on different services and so on. Not really what I'm interested in doing right now. There's a lot of money sitting there. I would like to spend it wisely. That's not really looking like an option at this point in time. So if anybody's not aware, they have a centrifuge system that takes all of their solids and it spins out the liquid, comes out of a screw conveyor, comes into a truck, gets dumped into the building, out factory, mix it with mulch, basically like bark mulch like you would put in your garden, just not treated for anything, just blanking. So they basically more than double the volume of material that they have to handle. What happens is the mulch, they mix it with the mulch, they pile it, they air it, they create heat and it burns off the bacteria. So every 40 days, they take out roughly 400 tons of mulch out of the facility that's clear to be removed because the bacteria, fecal bacteria is dead and it has to be tested out. They test it for 100 and something different things. Heavy metals, silver, sodium, and basically anything that you could think of and some stuff I've never heard of before. So that says that it's safe. It's classified as a Class 1 compost material that can be used for earth overbird. You can spread it on your garden, you can put it on landfill, you can do numerous things with it. The problem is, is there's no real market for it anymore. They had, years ago, they had a place where they could sell it off too. That was money in their pocket, publicly on their contract. Now that's gone. So they haven't really looked into any options for removal because now it's going to cost them. They feel they're not making enough money in their current contract to pay additional fees. So they currently have over 5,000 cubic yards of material stored on site. In their contract, it specifically calls out that they're not supposed to house any more than 2,000 yards of material outside of the building at any point in time. Now, keep in mind, every 20 days, 400 more yards of material goes out the door. So they're giving some away here, some away there. There's a couple landscape contractors that take it, they mix it with the whole, and they dispose it that way. But there is no direct path to get rid of everything that's there. Now I have some concerns about the runoff that's coming off of this pile and going into the Brooklyn adjacent to the property, which then goes downstream about 300 feet into the river. Obviously with our MS4 permit, it's our technical combination. Outside of the mulch issue is the, a large volume of storms that we've been having, the amount of liquids that are coming into the site. There's a lot of money in accounts to do for I&amp;I study and I&amp;I repairs to the system. So their daily operation goal is no more than like 6.5 million gallons of liquid on site. During a large rainstorm back in December 2023, they peaked the charts at over 24 million gallons and they were overflowing. The next rainstorm was a very similar event. Went down there to inspect and see how things were going. And they conveniently set up a trash pump to pump it into an empty tank that they have on site so they can control the flow. So they weren't overflowing. Which brought up the question of, well, how come we didn't do that the first time? Didn't get an answer. Kind of got them. So those are some small contention issues that I have with the process. But there's a lot of other things that to me are of large concern. And I feel that ignoring any of these items and just renewing their contract at the end of November and just letting it slide is probably going to cost the town a lot more in the future.
All right. So I got, for now?
I have concerns with the contract now. We've had some discussions. And the biggest complaint to the tax base of the community is the smell. And I knew from my ears of being around here that a lot of the smell was created because of that building where it's being dried, I guess, and that kind of stuff. So and they're well aware of it. They tried perfumes, they tried doing different kinds of things. But now I feel that the amount of product being stored there is well over what is the allowable limit and they're not doing something I don't appreciate. The other thing is part of the contract that would surprise me was the amount of work that they were required to do that they're not doing, such as manhole repairs. I didn't realize that the manholes out in the street are supposed to be repaired from Viola. And I know we've done the repairs to some room, but in their bid, I'm sure that they allowed for repairing manholes, which they haven't done. So if they didn't bid the product properly, then shame on them. And the other thing, I don't have a problem going out for rebid. I hope we decide that we go out for rebid. But I know from being my experience here in the community that this bid was tailored to Viola by the, the Thai bond, was it that written it up? Or the engineering services. And I was to keep a small guy out, such as somebody like RH White or smaller companies that are very capable of running our size plant. But our DP Director at the time had the plan geared towards bigger companies like Viola. And so the smaller companies didn't bid. So I don't have a problem. I'll support when it comes time to make notification. And truthfully, if there's a bond that they have to put up for their contract and they're not using their contract, it's maybe something that we need to look at to institute the bond because they're not doing their work. And I don't have a problem. The only thing I ask is that we, if we go out for bid, that we allow anybody that is capable of running our treatment plant, whether it's a small facility, you know, a small company, but it has the potential. And that's my thing. Thank you.
Other discussions. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, as far as the smoke goes, I have to give them credit. That smells been a lot better than it has had in the past years. That, it's done a fairly good job. But like you say, they're not doing things they're supposed to do. So we definitely should show them that, you know, put up the bid and say, hey, we're not happy with this. Put something in there that they have to be taking care of these things on the next contract instead of letting it, you know, sit like it is. And then as far as the manholes go, I didn't know that either. Because the sewer manholes are bottoming in real bad shape. I mean, along with the rest of the roads in town. So that, so much to be said about that too. Need to get on the ball on that. So I support putting that out for bid.
Go ahead. Counselor Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is three months enough time to review this?
So we have longer than that. So I started the process now because we have until May 30th to notify them of our intentions. So their contract expires November 30th. So the notification date is just to let them know whether we're going to be extending their contract another five years or that we're going to choose to rebid the contract. Then we have that six-month period to actually do so. Starting it now, we can start earlier than that to do the bid process and so on, but I don't think it's absolutely necessary. Wanted to start the conversation now in case there was more that came out of the conversation with, you know, how it would say be in town. So it's not my decision, it's my recommendation. There's a lot of information in here that we can go over that would support my recommendation. And there's a lot of on-site things that would support my recommendation. But ultimately, it's a decision of the town. So the timeline is that we have until May 30th to notify, officially notify that we're going to either stand over you then we have until November 30th to lock in a contract to take over the contract. So they will have to function until their contract expires November 30th.
Is there an appetite out there for other companies to want to come in?
I'm sure that there would be if it was to come available. I know that one of the things is that it is in their contract that we have the right to retain the staff. So any staff that is on site currently, we have the right to retain. And the staff is not an issue. Staff, they know, the guys that are in charge down there, they know the plant, they know how to run it, they know how to handle it. They know all this quirks and different things. They're not very well managed. They're not very well supported. There's not a lot of leadership there. There's a few people above this location that are kind of overseeing multiple locations and nobody's really saying, okay, well, you know, if there's issues here, let's take care of them. I've given them more than enough opportunities to try to at least make some footprints on the ground as far as doing something that's going to make me smile. Hasn't happened yet.
And my last question. With the way costs have shot up in all the other industries, are we going to take a big hit on this if we rebid it or?
I don't know that. That's the one thing I don't know. I think that if the cost is going to go up, I would say yes. I do know that we do have some, we have some financial security as far as what we have for retaining areas and such for the wastewater department that could absorb some of those costs and funds that haven't been spent over the years. So that, and then we would probably, it should probably be doing a rate study for water and sewer at the same time, just to see if there's any increases that we should be doing based on the environment. But I would say yes, that the cost will probably most definitely increase. If you feel.
I guess I'm putting you on the spot then, unless I misunderstood. You feel that we should go out for rebid?
I feel like the costs associated with rebidding now are going to outweigh the costs associated with not, as far as the legal requirements and so on, or even MS4 and wastewater in general, general pumping through the EPA. And the costs of the town as far as the system not functioning.
Thank you. Mr. Lozal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Review to the DPW Director. He brought up the compost. Years ago, I hauled 10 wheelloads out of there with no problem. Then they reduced it to a certain amount per household. Then they went to this company that was taking it up. Now we're stuck with a lot of it. Maybe we could make it known to townspeople that if they hire someone to go and pick it up and they can use it in your yards. A lot of people don't know that they still can not get that. Maybe you can reduce some of that.
It's seven yards, right? For household?
Yeah, or something like that.
Yeah, but in 18, I know, pushed it out. Didn't do it after that, but it's one of those things that not a lot of people.
I was trying to get rid of it. Just give them as much as they want or.
I can get some of that.
So if you could put that out there to the townspeople, I'm sure you can get rid of some of that.
Maybe we could sell potatoes that grow there.
But the lawns with them, I have all the landscaping people, but there needs to be lawns with it. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marquess.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is a motion at the end of this agenda here. They've taken a motion to town council for approval. So if you're recommending not to do that, and should you vote no on this and yes on the next one?
So what I did was I read it off. I didn't ask for a motion until somebody, somebody did, I was going to say, don't do it. But that's okay. I combined both agenda items. So you've got, you know, at the end of the day, we can just amend it and just put it in there.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman. I would leave a motion and I would say both to authorize the town manager to notify Viola of the intent to not renew.
Very well.
But you don't want another five years, right? Because if you lock yourself into another five years, I don't know how you're going to get out of that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So this should be, the motion should be both to authorize the town manager to notify Viola of the intent not to renew the contract.
All right, I was just reading the agenda.
Very important, right? Yeah. No, and that, it goes with this because there's two things. One is allow us to notify them. And the second would authorize the town to.
Go ahead, Ben. So then number five and six could have been combined or it could have been?
Separate.
Yeah. So, I mean, we'll just take that motion and amend that, whoever made that motion, and we'll go back and throw a new one in there.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, that's okay.
Go ahead, through you, Mr. Chairman. Are we sure we will get some rebids out? I don't want to get stuck with, we have nobody bidding on it, we're stuck with them.
Positive. Okay. Counselor.
During the budget season, I was, I wasn't impressed with Viola because the general never paid or nothing with the capital budgets. Somebody, their key staff people left. But I know you tried to work with them and to figure things out. In the event that Viola got bought out, I guess, to figure out the very worst that they merged. And it's like, right hand, don't know what the left hand is, they're willing to be. But in the event that Viola decides to walk on us, do you have a backup plan?
Yes. Okay. All right. Any other discussion on this? Who made the motion originally? All right, James, you want to draw that?
I'll let's draw a motion.
Very well. Thank you. Your motion, town manager, was to just lay and have them agree on that motion if you can locally, really, uh, to pass.
Both, so allow the, allow the town managers to notify Viola of the intent not to renew the contract for wastewater treatment plant operations.
Checking out. So I'm moving.
Head on in.
That makes sense.
A little slow, guys.
I got to wear it down.
Thank you. Mr. Cody, any? And then, all right, any discussion on that?
Review and discuss the town manager's recommendation to rebid the contract and then send it to the council for approval.
It's sentenced, maybe.
Well, the next, the next motion would just be, the next number six would just say, hey, we're going out for bid.
So we accept number six?
Yeah, we'll keep number six. Any other discussion on number five? All in favor? Post, 5-0. All right, number six, review, discuss DPW Director's recommendation to rebid the wastewater contract to Towne Southrings. They're taking motion to the town council.
I'll make that motion.
So move.
All right. Any other discussion on that? All right, all in favor? Post, 5-0. All right. Number seven, review, discuss, citizen request to add four-way stop sign to Ellison Oakland Roads. They're taking motion to the town council.
I'll make that motion.
Sorry.
All right. Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to defer to the DPW and Chief Witten because this is traffic commission recommendations.
You want to come up there?
Chief, you want to come on up?
You were looking at me.
Really, you want to come on up?
Why is he sick? Someone's sick? He's sick. So, well, through you, Mr. Chairman. We had a traffic commission meeting. We discussed it. These four-way stop signs have been coming out more frequently. And this has been done since and after consulting with DPW Director. I think this, we should do it. It's a safety issue. The road's been redone, there's some configurations in sightlines in that road. I would, how do you recommend that we support this?
Any discussion?
I do say, I'm, I'm deciding because we're coming from high school that way. There's a hump there. And if you're, if you're going fast, you're not going to be able to see that going through it. It's 100% news that badly there.
Very well. Thank you. Anything else? All in favor? Post? All right, review, discuss adding signage to improve the safety concerns of residents with the use of concurrent walking signals. Main Street, poor area, but.
I'll make that motion. Sorry.
Anything?
Where are we?
Look. Through you, Mr. Chairman. This comes up again and again and again and has now for several years. The DPW Director and I have gotten together, floated some ideas during our traffic commission meeting. We wanted to bring to this committee to see if we could finally put this to bed once and for all. For those that, I'm assuming everybody has some idea with concurrent walking signals. But if you're not, they're used in every major city in the world. They're also used close to home in Worcester. In overseas, I mean, these things are everywhere. Southridge wanted concurrent walking signals with the construction project. That was done by the DOT. And there's been a lot of complaints since then. Basically, when someone's trying to cross the street, not, our intersection freezes now. So what's happening back in the day, I'll say in 2000s, when you were trying to cross Central and Elm or Central and Main, Elm and Main, the whole intersection would freeze. There would back up traffic. Concurrent signals, and they were just installed in Oxford also. I'm thinking I'm looking at, maybe we're not. It's to alleviate traffic congestion downtown. They have worked. They have reduced that congestion, I'd say, probably 50% with using concurrent signals. The issue is, the onus is on the motorist and the pedestrian. You can't just step blindly off the sidewalk because it says to walk. You have to look. And on a personal note, several of you have heard me say this. My nephew, who's 21 days old, he's in medical school in Boston. He's not a dumb kid. He was hit by a car because he, in Boston, hit the signal and he crossed. It said to cross, and he got hit by an Uber driver because the Uber driver was taking a right turn on red. So it affects me personally. I know some people, oh, you don't care about the pedestrians and stuff. I do. I've had a family member who was struck by a car. But I don't think we should go back to the old ways because then we'll be here again. We'll be before the council on Monday nights, people complaining about congestion downtown. So I recommend you keep kind of saying, certainly not speaking with the DPW Director. We've had many conversations about this. I think he agrees with me. But we also, in other cities I've seen, they now have signs because pedestrians cannot understand concurrent walking signals. So now they have signs eye level. And when you hit the button, it tells you, look left, a car could be coming. It's very hot and they almost make it, I don't want to come to the wrong word. It's foolproof is the right, is the completely correct word. Where when you hit the button, you're literally looking at this sign. You cannot miss it unless you cannot read. And it tells you, look left before you cross. And that's what I recommend we do. We talked about it extensively at traffic commission. There's also signs would be used. I mean, I have a copy. I don't know if I can present this, but this would be for cars. We'd also have it right near the red light. So it says, turning vehicles, you're going to yield to pedestrians. So there'd be an LED light flashing for the motorists and there'd be a light on the crosswalk signal right where the button is. There'd be a small sign that says, look to the left, look to the right, whichever applies. That, I think, would increase some of the safety downtown. It will not eliminate all the issues that we've had. You'd be amazed how many calls I get from people about this. The only issue, and not to hijack the meeting here, is when you're coming up Main Street, you're taking a left on the Elm. I would say you probably, we shouldn't do the walk when someone's trying to beat that, that turn on the left and also have people crossing at the same time. That could cause issues. But the DPW Director, I thought, we can adjust that light. We can make that so it doesn't happen. That's my opinion is like this, and I just want to put it to bed once and for all. We talked about this when I first came on DPW Subcommittee. And what I suggested is that the walk signs where the person comes up, if they put a flashing caution light like they do at the walk signs in the center of Main Street where there is no light. So when they activate the walk signal, that flashing, people see that. So they know somebody's going to walk. And I, and we talked about it, but it's just a matter of funding to change, to add that to the existing signal. When the walk sign comes up, that you have a flashing caution light come on. It works. I mean, people see that in front of the post office. They see it in front of the trade winds. They hit that thing and it flashes. People know that somebody's walking. So if we added those to the, especially the core where the people come out, that might be what's doing up with the LEDs up there.
where the people come out, that might be what's doing that, but the LEDs up there and so when somebody hits that, stop, having the walk button, and once it turns to walk, it would activate those lights. And then the driver would see it, the walker would see it, I don't know if it would give a false sense of security when those lights came on, but.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'm open for any suggestions, but I would say as far as for the cost effectiveness, we can get signs and put those up relatively quickly, right at the eye level, when you're hitting the button. You can't cross the street, make the walk signal while hitting the button. So I would think it's it's in your face, you're seeing it, you're looking at it. It's just a quicker, it's a it's a quick fix and hopefully it keeps people safe. I think your idea would be, if you could talk to the manager about, you know, behind closed doors, but that's gonna be an expensive uh.
It it could be, you're looking at one, two, at least four.
At least.
You know, sets of those lights, but uh, you know, it's just, just a warning device because people don't see the car, right, the size of the car with the sign. And I don't say, I I agree with you, we don't go backwards because all the surrounding towns are starting to do this type of traffic control. So we, if we teach our citizens, might take a little longer for some, but this is the way it is in the world. You're not gonna get enough to hear it, Salvage doing it our way, going to, say, West End doing the, the pairway.
Any other discussion on this? So I got a couple of things. Those those flashing lights, I I just called Pete the other day about one over by Morris, it's not working. There's another one that's not working, it's the housing that's, that's, I guess, it's pretty cheap. So we're getting these things on branch, but they're, they're not working. Actually, some lady had to walk, a gentleman, because he's in a wheelchair, across the street by K Street, right? Because he couldn't get across fast enough, just stood there. And and we, I think we've had like three or four of them go down already in a matter of a year. Uh so we gotta fix those first. And I would say this, how many signs do we need in the downtown area? If anybody drives downtown, there are signs everywhere and I pay no mind to any of those signs, except for flashing beacons. And a couple of times, I'll be free to admit, I've gone right through those flashing beacons a couple of times because it's at the last second. But how many signs do we absolutely need before personal responsibility of our citizens takes precedence? You know, uh I I, we just had a couple of accidents here, unfortunately last, it had nothing to do with flashing beacons, crosswalks or anything like that. They just, and I just saw a bike, the same one from last year, I'm gonna take a picture sooner or later, probably while I'm driving too. And and the guy's on a little bicycle, on a bicycle with his cigarette, short guy, and he rolls, rolls riding through the intersection of Main and Elm. And 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 people honk at him and he acts like it's their fault. So I I don't know how many more signs we absolutely need in this this town, but I'd like to take a look at them, maybe, maybe it works cheap, but I don't, I just don't know how many more signs we need.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the chief, I like that idea. I think it should be there.
Just another step, another uh, another safety precaution, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So in theory, that that sign that the chief had brought, that would be hung up above the intersection, on the wire that holds up the lights. But when you're looking at the light, that sign's right next to it.
And if I could, just to somewhat agree not to ride the fence with with Councilor Adam, but I agree with you on the fact, a lot of signs, people don't care. They ignore them, they blow through them. But I think this, to uh DPW director's point, right near the light, you're literally looking at the light, you can't, it's almost impossible to not see it. And then if we put something eye level for pedestrians, it just kind of firms up a little bit what we already have in place and maybe we'll get citizens and our residents used to crossing using concurrent signals. So I'm I'm open for anything, any suggestion, I just wanna get.
I hear what everybody's saying, but I also see a lot of problem with uh kids in town and stuff that. Can we also, you know, maybe do something at school, when the school talks to the kids and tell them, tells them how to walk across the streets? I mean.
If you can't behave in school, they're not gonna behave along the street, so that's a problem.
Right, I agree, but you know. He's not mentioned to them.
I hate to say it, I I remember being taught by my mother, at the school.
A different day and time.
Alright, so that's a little discussion.
Well, because I was hit by a car, almost died because he was, just thought he was invincible in the pronunciations, so, but what happened to him? Hey, are you right?
Any other discussion on this? Alright, all those in favor? Opposed?
Want to bring back the blocks with the carpet?
You don't like the concrete?
With your concrete, well, I did it a few times.
But, that's fine. On the two, on these two motions, seven and eight, so the first one is vote to install a four-way stop sign to Ellis and Oakwood, right?
Right.
And then this is vote to add signage to improve on Main Street core area?
Yes.
I just wanna make sure. Vote to add. Okay? Thank you.
Right.
Just wanna make sure we have them covered, right? That was, that was your motion, vote to add.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Um number nine, review discuss, uh review discuss changes to East Main Street design.
We started with this. You had a difference, no, I did, I'll, I'll. We have been talking about East Main Street with Steve, Peg, Rich, um about what the original scope of East Main Street was, then what the cost was, and then the fact that the town doesn't have all the funding for the cost project. And what could we do within the scope to make changes? One, make sure that we do what we want to do, but two, also what's, what needs to be done, absolutely needs to be done in a cost effective manner, because we just closed out the West Street project. We reconcile the funding mechanism, we're gonna have to go to council, while the council already voted, we're gonna have to bond uh for those. Dean's currently working on the current East Main Street, some of the votes that had already been taken, to make sure that we have a project scope, so. But what we're trying to do with these projects, remaining projects that we have on the town, vote East Main Street, the two small bridges, and then, and the two small, those are the two big projects that we have for the town. And we know we have the tip projects, which is the Mill Street Bridges and the Downtown Core, and we have some additional works to do. So it really was, one, what do we have for funding, where do we have less of bonding capacity? And also the small streets that we want to do the side street. So that's why I'm having this conversation about what we could look to with this project. Change, but also make it a uh, a great project. Think I can capture everything down there?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Alright. Uh council. I was kind of impressed when I talked to Rich the other day about this project. And it's a five million dollar project. And his questions, we started working on this project, why do we replace the water lines and sewer lines that are absolutely good? And nobody can give him the answer of why we're doing that. And he felt, if I understood right, he could save close to a million and a half, maybe a million ninety, he said. And he just, it was an valve replacement. And there was no, and the the structures and stuff that might need to be repaired, raised, those kind of things. The actual lines, he felt that they were, they were funny. And a lot of those lines were replaced within the last ten years, am I, am I right to say? When they, when they did the uh, so, you know, I think when it's sewer play, when they brought the lines in from AO or something, I mean, from the projects done like the concrete and that kind of stuff and, and maybe. But I I, I was impressed with it, so you take a million and a half, say, off the five million dollar price, I run up to that with, it's, it's getting into a more acceptable uh cost accretivity.
So the the plans that the council have, it was pretty due prior to this, were the ninety-five percent feature plans that were put together by a combination of efforts between three different engineering firms. So we were in in discussion about additional add-ons to that ninety-five percent project. We were, we were at like the four, seven, almost four, eight range, and then there were, there were some other things that we're looking at, need to be in place. So the overall conversation at that point in time was like five point two million. And the project limits are from Morris Street to, oh, low transmissions, heavy D motors. So from there down to uh through the plaza and then to the, our, our limits of our road prior to the Old Creek. That was not even part of any of this, that was just gonna stay as it was. So I'm, right now I'm working with the engineers to add a scope work to this. So when it does go out to bed, I wanna, I wanna pay the length of this, fix the structures, structure adjustments, whatever needs to be done there, pay. I talked to Steve, the water department, we've looked into what needs to be done in that section of road that we could do without spending another million dollars on additional features. To to seal it all up and make it one continuous unit. Back to the main scope of the project, so the last time this was discussed, there was uh gonna be a ten-foot shared use path like what's on West Street that would go from Morris Street down to K Street parking area. So that would be an access point for the rail trail, due to the fact that we don't currently have it in the budget to build a bridge over Main Street for the rail trail. From there, we are going to keep the sidewalk on the west side of the road, abandon the sidewalk on the east side of the road along the fence line around the AO property, back down to the gas station by Hudson Northwood Stock Road. So the conversation was from the shared use path, we're gonna continue with a five-foot sidewalk all the way down the radius of Port to meet up with Woodstock Road and the rail trail. So the issue is, costs associated with doing that, all of the drainage would have to be moved, shifted over. There's issues with the gas made in the area that was recently replaced, would probably have to pay National Grid to move that line again. This section of road is set to be reclaimed due to the water line replacement. And the adjustments that were gonna have to be placed on the road for EVA adjustment because of the sidewalks and so on to be able to access the K Street uh driveway. So what we're proposing now is to do a, a five-foot sidewalk on the west side of the street, so from Morris Street, past the variety store, around the corner to the K Street parking lot, be a five-foot sidewalk, EVA sidewalk. We would also make repairs to the sidewalk on the opposite side of the street, uh AO property side. And then the sidewalk from there would have to stay on that side of the road. What we discussed is, by safety concerns, as far as there's no guardrail around that bend. And I'm pretty sure everybody agrees there's defenses under it. So what we're looking at doing is having a, a guardrail with a fence attached to it to maintain safety around the curb. The the guardrail has to go behind the sidewalk. So that that was a question that came up before, was can we put a sidewalk between traffic and the people? And due to the traffic standards, no, the side, the guardrail has to go behind the sidewalk. So what we're discussing now, we're looking to get a cost estimate to section guardrail with a fence, a safety fence attached to it, because it has to be over six feet tall so that kids walking the sidewalk can't tumble down the back, because it's a pretty significant drop off. So that section of sidewalk, it's already there, it's currently asphalt, get replaced with a concrete sidewalk. The fencing would stop at a little beyond where, so if you're coming north on East Main, the driveway that goes across the bridge is across the river down on the, the K Street. Where that driveway comes in to meet up on the front parallel with the road, the fence would stop shortly thereafter. It would just be guardrail along that embankment because it's not as much of a drop off, the safety concern kind of goes away. So that would increase the sightline for vehicles and also pedestrians in the crosswalk at K Street. Which was a concern that's just kind of been lingering for a while. Beyond that, let's see, just looking back at Peg's notes that she gave, sorry, I forget. So we had to discuss the access to the bike path. So one of the things that was discussed was the shared use path, and the fact that the West Street shared use path was kind of ill-accepted by, you know, the residents because of the size, the amount of streets that it took up, the parking that it took away. This project, they were really looking at trying to do some methods for traffic calming, to slow traffic down coming through that area. So one of, that was one of the purposes for shrinking the road. I've kind of made my point about not wanting to shrink the actual size of the road, but shrink the the designated area of the flow of traffic. So what what we're looking at now in this uh new projection is to run a bike path, a a line bike path on both sides of East Main Street. From the Northwood Stock Road intersection to Morris Street on both sides. So you would still have your eleven-foot lanes and then you would have your bike lanes, so you wouldn't reduce your shoulder size. And that is something that if, if we did get a bridge, we were seeing any issues, we could take those out because it's just a pain in the road. And they're not, it's not gonna be a horrible extended cost to, to keep up on. As opposed to having another ten-foot sideline that I'm not much of a fan of. And then there was also the safety improvements that were initially discussed. The advanced flashing beacons and additional signage and stuff for the the K Street intersection to increase the safety as part of the grant that Hank Pien had gotten, that we're supposed to satisfy.
Couple of questions. This is done with the grant that we have to use with time?
Yes, so there is, there is some grant funding going into this, the grant expires next July. It's uh, believe, that that was something that was concurrent with the grant for K Street as well, right? Do you remember that?
K Street for the fiscal year twenty-one?
This, it was something that was a grant that, maybe it was because of K Street, it was how the grant came about, but we have until next July to satisfy it. So the the plan at the moment is, we won't have to spend a lot more money on engineering costs because the clerk can use their existing ninety-five percent drawings, they're going to remove, we reduced the water, the amount of water work. So Mr. Gregor and I have gone through this and figured out what needs to absolutely be done. So the water lines, water mains do not need to be replaced in the area. We've discussed doing a hydrant project and also replacing the valves in that area. That should suffice for what what our requirements are. There's, I've been told that there's no issues with the sewer mains in the area, so we're good to go there. It's basically do the work that's required, get the sidewalks in, mill out the road instead of reclamation. Now we're just milling off what's there, two inches, three cases, so to reduce the amount of construction time, to reduce the overall costs. Still gonna get a really nice road, it's gonna have all the safety improvements that we're looking for. And I'm hoping to tie in the southern portion of the road with the project to get that repaved as well. So that our entire entrance to our town is is complete as opposed to a portion of it being uphoned.
The reason, the reason I'm asking is, you know, do we need to spend the money on this, because it's, it's not in that bad of a shape compared to a lot of our other roads. And if it's on a grant, then it's.
I wanna say that grant had something to do with K Street. Yeah, it was, and it was. Because they even brought the, another grant that they were looking at doing, um for Chip Dor, I'm not gonna say Chip Dor, Frank Delfin.
I can, I can go back, but it's a master's grant, and it is.
Okay, I remember that, we had a, okay, so that's my sense.
Alright. So, uh, has someone, Ken?
Mr. Chairman. So, they're here, you're right, you're not eliminating the sidewalk coming off of the rail trail on that side, or you are eliminating that?
So we're gonna eliminate the shared use path, the the ten-foot shared use path in that area. We plan to install a five-foot standard sidewalk for that area so that there still is uh area for pedestrians to travel from the rail trail to Rotary without having to cross the road again.
Alright.
Costs associated with that is significantly less because there's no adjustments to anything, unless it has to be made, there's no, no drainage, it's been moved. It's not gonna go over the gas main and so on. So I I believe the cost estimating, from what I got from that, was like a hundred sixty thousand dollars for a five-foot sidewalk versus a questionable amount of, reaching possibly near a million because of the stuff that would have to get pulled.
Sidewalk on the east side is wanting to be improved, because that's, uh some people have a problem walking that sidewalk. It's so close to the tri- it's not very much room to walk, that's gonna be improved?
Yes, that that will get bumped out and become a full width sidewalk as well. So the curbing will get moved out in that sidewalk, actually, it could get moved out a reasonable amount because we have to leave enough space behind it to have stall. because we have to leave enough space behind it to have solid ground for the guardrail. So that you'll have your five, five-and-a-half foot concrete sidewalk going all the way around the corner, all the way down. And then you'll have guardrail behind that.
And then one last thing, there is a lot of flooding now. So there is a problem with something, I don't know if it's proper drainage or what, but I know certain rainstorms we've had, I've come through there and they've cut it all. Police are down there, you have to drive pretty slow through it, so...
So that's, that's something that was looked into because directly across from Kate Street, they're coming out of the woods behind the rail trail. There is a drainage system there that's plugged up. That is currently included in the bill for the rail trail is to correct that issue. And then further down, there's, there's another drainage issue that's kind of on us that I bargained.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your... Is that ledge off property done yet, touched at all? After Thomas's on the office, I don't think that's where it is, I believe so. What's changed? Does she need to do the water pipes anymore?
So the hydraulic model for fire flow for the area down through the Ziguar Shopping Plaza states that you need a certain ton of flow. The existing mains that are there in East Main Street do not, do not present themselves with the flow required for that model. So in conversations with the water manager, we talked about how much water goes to that area. So that model does not include the cross-country main that comes from Levitt Hill down into town.
High School.
Oh, High School. I've been assured that there are no issues with hydraulics for fire flow. Which was the only reason for the water mains. There was, there was no concerns about condition or any of that. It was basically a certain hydraulic model stating that you didn't do the fire problem.
So when it was presented to us previously, it was all hell breaking loose, like we need to change this? Okay.
Anything else? So I, I glad the guardrails were put in there. It was a recommendation in a meeting a couple of years ago to put guardrails because we have the tendency of taking out fences with people right on the road. And men who get a guardrail practically every year, you know, so there, so, you know, do that. But the bike, so the bike lanes would be on both sides, right? So you have a five-foot, whether it's a couple of feet, three, six inches or something like that. I know a lot of bikers go all the way down that road up to Northwood Stock and they go right into that again. Right, the entrance, is that a one-way coming, going into Kate Street? Where's that, you know?
No, it's four ways.
So no left turn coming out?
Is no left turn coming out, but is there a lot of people going left to enter?
I, I haven't seen any.
Not as much as they used to.
Right, no, okay. Is there a thought about making that? I know it's Franklin Wilf's property. Making that a one-way and then coming out mechanic?
I don't think we can force them to do it.
Probably with the planning board now building a hundred and thirty-eight units, that guy could be a far superior to look at five or three boards as, as something, you know?
Put a little mechanic in more. I don't know.
I, I think there was a conversation about it from what I read, but there was what the impact would be to the mechanic street side of that property. So that, that we're recommending against it, because a lot of traffic here comes out of that way and driving through the whole complex, so... The discussion with the planning board from my side and from the police chief's side was with Kate Street, it is bidirectional traffic on their property. We are able to enforce the no-left turn rule coming out of there because it's not safe. As far as the flow of traffic through the property, that is on them. But with this new permit, they have, it's, it's in the permit that they have to do a traffic study for the first year once they get under C.O. I have asked the, the planning board to try to make sure that if there are concerns that come up because of the traffic study, that it also falls on their responsibility to make repairs for the concerns.
And discussion.
But I think also during some discussion with the Kate Street, that that project had a traffic study to be done after the project was open. I believe that's in the planning board order of conditions. And if I recall correctly, it never did it. It was never enforced under the existing thing. You know, it's, it's the same deal with the fence. They're required to maintain and do that kind of thing for the fence, and they haven't done any of that. So, I mean, the impact to the community, yeah, sure, we need, we need apartments, but we need to look at the impact to the community also, the tax payers and those kind of things, so... Just, that's my, just my thought.
Anything else to discuss? No motion, no motion, please, just discuss.
But does he have to come back to him to change? Like the bike trail, it was over to that council that paid for a portion of the year's funding, I think, for the bike trail.
They'd have to come back to the council for amendment, change order?
For the plans?
Yeah.
I think that was the change to the grant and stuff. We could follow.
I, I just don't wanna go unnecessarily.
Yeah, I don't know if we can also approve the plans, I'm not sure what the last one was.
The Morris Street project, from Morris Street to the bike trail. We voted on that to make that change and to put the sidewalk in down there and that kind of stuff, I thought. Maybe when we first came on council. And then we're going to use funds from the bike trail to offset the costs related to that sidewalk. And it was a ten, I think a ten-foot sidewalk. It was gonna go from the trail to Morris Street. And they were gonna use trail money and I think part of that East Main Street money too. So I don't know if it needs to change as far as the appropriation.
If it has to, we'll get it out of council, because there's one ahead.
Okay, all right, good point. All right, number ten, review discuss whether town council should approve applying for thirty thousand dollars through the Massachusetts Preservation Project Fund to complete a town hall facility study for a total project cost of sixty thousand two hundred dollars. And the town's fifty percent matching fund. Coming from the town hall renovations project number six-three-three-nine-zero, raising seventy-five percent of the project cost per the grant requirements to cover temporary cash flow. Over forty-five thousand one hundred fifty dollars from the town hall renovation project six-three-three-nine-zero until reimbursed and allow the town manager to sign any related paperwork. So...
Town manager.
That motion was a mouthful, but it was, you guys approved it last year.
We did.
I actually read it, that's... This came, this came forward from the last town council meeting with council by Katie had asked about upper funds for a study and could I follow up on, you know, follow up on it? We did follow up on it, there were no upper funds for the project itself. We did talk to Peg, it was dialogue back and forth and clarified what we were talking about. We went, Peg then informed us that we did not get the grant, but the next round is up. So we have like very short period of time till next week to apply for this. So she's willing to put the paperwork through to apply for it again to see if we can get this, this study funded. So I, that's why it's the same word in, it's, it's the same project. It's, the money's still there that we had budgeted to match that based on Karen. It's actually not what was from Karen back in day, but there haven't been any changes to that. So if the council so chooses that we want to have this town hall study done and analyzed, we'll put up for the grant to have that done.
So I apologize first place, it must have been a long night when I read this off.
It must have been about a year ago. And this actually came, when it came through with last time, it went through planning and development subcommittee. I called it off, no different. But yeah, I think it's the council, so the council of Daniel. We didn't put it through this planning development because we had the DPW and it's kind of a mixed mingle anyway. DPW handles facilities, so that's, that's why it's, it's here. So they can go to council because of the timeliness of getting this grant application. Council, we're good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your, I'm just starting to get the numbers straight here. The project is sixty thousand two hundred. We are going to be putting seventy-five percent of that on forty-five thousand one fifty. They are gonna reimburse us thirty thousand. So forty-five, one fifty and thirty thousand is seventy-five thousand one fifty. Out of that seventy-five, one fifty, project is sixty thousand two hundred, so we are going to take fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty and put it back into the project, put it back into the facility budget area. That's the way it looks like, I don't know. So we're just trying to get a handle on it.
Yeah, so we have to come up with seventy-five percent even though we're requesting fifty percent.
I get that, I'm just looking at, they're gonna reimburse us thirty grand. I looked at the meeting, trying to get a handle on what, how the funding is, it's kind of confusing. The way I can figure it out is they're going, they have a cash flow problem. They're gonna give us thirty grand, but we're already putting forty-five thousand one hundred and fifty into it. So you add those two together, that's seventy-five thousand dollars.
So if, if you take the sixty thousand, right, that's the total cost, but you're right on that one. We, even though it's fifty-fifty split, we, we own us, we have to come up with seventy-five percent.
I get that.
We're gonna get half of that money back, so it's gonna turn into thirty thousand dollars.
We're gonna get thirty thousand back. Now, when I look at this, the money that we have in the capital fund, the last one I had was from twenty-twenty-two. I have asked for an update, still waiting for that update of how much is left in there. But we have the town hall renovations. The last I had was fifty-seven nine oh two, I know it's, it's down to forty-eight now. We also have a town hall facility improvement and that one was thirty-two thousand five hundred fifty-eight. So we basically could fund this ourselves. So I don't know why we're waiting, you know, I'm glad to take the thirty thousand, but I think we should just go ahead and do this with the funding that we have here and then wait for their thirty thousand to come back. Because you know, we need to do something about this town hall, so I don't think we should just not do anything until we get that thirty thousand, put it in, I'm all for it. But in the meantime, let's do this study and get it done with it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we applying for the grant, is that what you're saying, apply for the grant?
Apply for the grant, but meanwhile, we shouldn't do this study regardless.
Well, I, yes, I, we could check to see what the timeline was. I don't know from, I was in here last year. I don't know from the grant application to them not getting it, what that time was. But one can follow up and then once we get through the, the budget cycle into the capitals of the town council, if that so chooses, we could allocate that money to that.
And the other thing is, I would, I would appreciate a more timely update on these grants because this happened last March and here it is, a year later, we didn't even know, we didn't get the grant, so... I'm not saying Ms. Dean has to come to every meeting, but I would like a monthly update on what's going on with the grants, with economic developments and so forth. Thank you.
Anything else? We have Mr. Cody.
I apologize, I haven't been around last year. What is this, another study, oh, town hall, town hall repair?
So it ends up being a town hall repair, I think, because this is a pretty old building right here. So I think that's what it was, the intent of last year was to start taking a look at all our facilities and damage to our facilities, and this would be a one-way to save some costs is in having this study done on what it would be, how to fix the place, what's the good use of it, spacing and all that kind of stuff. So I don't think with Ms. Dean being around, the town managers here, that this study will go to waste because I believe this will also open up more grants for us down the road as well. I don't wanna speak for Ms. Dean, I'm not sure, but I'm sure once you open up one grant, you can accept it. Sometimes you, you open up some other grants as well.
Hell, like how fairly good this is, it's just, you know, so much money lost for studies, after study, I mean... What I, what I ask for, what's, what's the study for?
I, I just answered some of that, I understand where you're coming from completely. But I will tell you, there was three or four studies done on facilities that just sat there. I think it was three, on facilities and stuff like that, just sat there. It's finally taken new leadership to actually move it forward because it wasn't going anywhere. We brought this up in two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, a long way to go.
Instead of being a doorstop, nowadays the studies are actually coming off the shelves and doing. But they're supposed to, it's like our master plans, go ahead and... Or let's see, this town manager, I got it, I got it.
Do you want, he raised his hand for us.
No, go ahead, council officer, yeah.
How are you looking at it?
Well, I just, to citizen member Cody, if you look through the architect's cost on what came back before. So the other facility study was more or less just a general, hey, yeah, you gotta do some things. This detailed study would be investigation report by a structural engineer, by HVAC officials, review plumbing and electric engineering, and then the architect presents the final study with recommendations and cost estimates. So it would be a cost estimate that would have actual, what's the structural, what's the HVAC, what's, as opposed to just the other study, which was just a facility study of all town buildings that just said, yeah, you're gonna fix your town hall, yeah, you're gonna build a new animal control shelter, yeah, you have to build a new fire station, things that we are, and this would be a little bit more detailed, so...
I think the other study would waste money personally, man. I think the study here that we're gonna study a building, a specific building. And we wanna find out not only what's, what's wrong with this building, the upgrades on the building, but the use of the building. And in some case, I have a manager, in his short six months, has already felt some pressure from department heads. And new department heads coming along and saying, we need some reconfiguration of offices. So the finance department runs more fluid. That would be something that would come up with that study. And I think this building, if we look around us, the churches, slates flying out of buildings, buildings collapsing, the mill just had another little flop in the back, a big bag. I think what we have to be is proactive with buildings of this age. And I do agree in, in favor of doing a study, but I also, it took a waterfall in the council chamber for all of us to turn around and say, I didn't know it was that bad. But again, if I could comment to Mr. Mark Eddie's statement of updates on grants. If there's one thing that I get confused over is the grants. I think Peg's doing a great job, she's like a ball of fire, go get this, go get that one, go get this one. But much like a lot of our road money and where's it coming from and how's it going, I think in the next coming year, upcoming year, we're gonna get a better handle on how to respond to a counselor that says, can I get an update on where these grants are? Because I gotta be honest with you, it's all good stuff. It's just a matter of where is it, how do we use it, how do we get it? And I think we need in the future, because I mean, we're going out for an overhaul to find a department and a lot of things in DPW on how we do business with the finances and contracts, stuff like that. There's nothing being done wrong, but it was just, I think, was done incorrectly before we all landed. And now we get a cleanup project, I know Jack's experienced in it. We're putting special people like Dean on the job for a reason. And that's to bring us full turn. And I think your request would be in line if we probably knew where absolutely everything was. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, you got anything?
No, I'm good, you're not awful, but it's...
So I agree, maybe we do need to make a motion down the road. Now, I will tell you this, a few years ago, we used to get a five-weekly report. Some people on the staff hated it. Well, it turned out like thirty pages of just junk. You know, there was, it was, it was ridiculous telling us how the meetings were going, what meetings.
I don't give a rat's behind about the meeting.
It's, it gave us a, a level of what the water was and the reservoir, so we had an idea. Simple things like that. You know, even if the economic development would be able to put when the grants were due or something like that, you know, not, nothing long time, diatribe to take up all the time. But I just would recommend that, and I believe our, our town manager recommended that as well. This last year here on the council. So I, I would just, I would recommend it myself, I would love to see that come back. It gave us an idea what was happening, but it doesn't need to be thirty pages, it's a waste of their time and energy. And that would be my recommendation and what I was able to give you. Thank you, sir.
Going back, I believe a few months ago, we had a problem that the job would get pushed back because one of the grants we had, we weren't working on. We had to move monuments, we had to move monuments and so, kind of that idea of...
That's the thing, that's karma right there. No, actually, when it came to the monuments themselves, everything was on time. And then we moved over here to this particle here.
No, someone up there stated not starting the job on... It was pushed back.
Oh, the one-year point.
Oh, it was pushed back because we weren't...
Yeah, well, it had a lot to do with the changeover personnel and they called it out and said, you're not gonna make it, they added an extra year to it, so... The tip, Roger, go run, on hook. So that's a good point. Anything else?
So that's what we're gonna need, the updates.
I have no idea, yeah, I just don't want to overwhelm staff, you know, like worrying about reports to us all the time when they've got a job to do, but...
I, I agree with you as long as reporting. The last thing you need, this guy here writing reports every day instead of working. He's a working DPW director. Uh, he's a working DPW director, uh, you know, he's in power in the truck, I think he's a very impressive person, but anyways. I think the reports biweekly, I'm not interested in it. What I am interested in, if you sell us on, sell our council on a project, the town hall study, where'd it go? And, and, and where did the money go? Because we all sat there in good faith, we're all in favor of doing this. And then, okay, we got it, and, and it sits there. At some point, we need to have a progress report on some of the projects. And have the layout, much like what the DPW director said today. Okay, he's settling us on two sidewalks, this, this, and that. Great, we're all on board. We're all voting yes. I'd like to see, like, like, six months from now, a year from now, you know, how are we doing with this? And then depending on how the project starts and stops, you know, just updates on some of the stuff that we're doing. Because we're approving a lot of stuff, you know, a lot of stuff, not, 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 not on Jack, prior to Jack. Where'd it go? You know?
So you sound like you want a report, so.
No.
I'm just kidding, I'm kidding, go. Let's move along, let's, go ahead, just tell that.
Yes, we got very detailed reports out of former town manager. But then if you look at what was actually done, nothing.
Yeah, and I agree with that, so we'll, we'll strike a balance. But to, to council Lazlo's point, what we're trying to do especially, yeah, your point is well taken, Councilman, it's a pity.
Where did the grant go? I don't know, where is it? So we're playing cleanup on this and we're doing all the things. And to the point about the projects, we're trying to take a very project-based approach. West Street, like I said, West Street project, right? And I know it's a little off topic, but it was reported. Um, West Street project, three point two million dollars that council throughout the years has voted appropriate monies for. We do a project and then we come down and we reconcile it. Town council had taken votes to borrow money in two thousand twenty one. No follow-up was done to borrow that money, right? Free cash was used, retained earnings, all that stuff. So we're really taking, that's why we're working with Steve and the water department, DPW. Let's look at these projects, so we don't have this. If it falls off and we don't get the grant, we're flipped back, we didn't get the grant, and we'll do a better job of that, so.
Any other discussion? All's in favor? O's, five zero. All right, number eleven. Uh, review discussed, town managers' recommendation, then a memorandum of understanding between the town software is, the town with public schools to establish terms under which the software is public schools, facilities, staff. We utilize the town software as a public works facility and allow the town manager to sign all related.
So, sir. Just town manager. Thank you. So this conversation has been ongoing between Rich, Mark, uh, in, in the last six, seven months, we've really developed a teamwork approach between schools, uh, these facilities, human resources, um, to work in it together collaboratively. And if anyone's still look at the West Street building, with the wall collapse that happened next door, which is nice. Uh, we do have that they will be starting construction with that relatively soon because we, I pushed the envelope with them. We were fining them three hundred dollars a day, the gas station for not, uh, complying, uh, so that, that's ongoing. But there are some issues with that building, as far as where they store things upstairs, right? Conveyable, which I think is dangerous to begin with, to, to ship things upstairs. Uh, not enough area for the trucks that they park out there that are left outside. Uh, and working cooperatively, Rich and Mark have really developed a really good relationship. Um, similar to the water department being in there, when you're closer together, you have these day-to-day conversations. Uh, I can't say enough about Mark and, and his department, uh, in the last several months. You know, uh, total redone of the, uh, community center, they're still working on the heating system. Our boiler system went to town councils, again, to project-based, hundred thousand dollars by this town council, not this town council. I was chair of the council. We allocated a hundred thousand dollars to do a boiler replacement, how many years ago? Not done, two boilers fail, we're down two boilers, now Rich and Mark working together. Are doing that at a pretty cost-effective, uh, basis, working collaboratively. So this memorandum agreement would be just to bring them down into the DPW facility with that. Um, council Lazlo and I had back, you know, many years ago, had a tour of the facility where they were gonna put them in a small room and all that, and it just wasn't the right fit. I think that goes back to Clayton Palat was town manager, I think, when we would talk about. So we talked about doing this for many, many years, it's never come to fruition. We're finally at a point where we have department heads that can talk to one another, work together, work collaboratively, come up with very good solutions, uh, for the future. And I think that this is just the first step in the partnership between the school and the town that we've talked about for a variety of other issues. Um, and it's a win-win for us. Um, Dean has reviewed the memorandum agreement too, he's gone on the school side, so, um, you know, so I think we're good to go, uh, with this. So I'll defer any other questions to Rich, Mark's here as well.
Any, any agreement that I write today, uh, low, usual private stations would be winterized and secured. Can I make a motion that we sell that building as soon as it vacates?
So I would caution off for that, for this discussion right now, because we have to do some research on the deed. Uh, what, how, what was allowed within the deed. So we do have the written deed, but we'd have to have legal look at it to make sure we can do it correctly.
Can we do it sooner than later? Because I, I don't want to see the buildings fall apart and end up disappearing.
No, no.
I go with correctly.
Huh?
Do it correctly.
No, we want to do it correctly and, uh, my goal would be to dispose of that property, get rid of it. But I just want legal to take a look at the deed and make sure we do it correctly.
We tend to hang on to things here and address the cases.
We don't want it up there. We want to.
That's a little smart.
My question, you have the room down there?
Absolutely. Yeah, they, they mapped out the room, uh, they're gonna work off when we make any changes that they have to make. The work's gonna be provided by the school staff, DPW. Uh, it's great model, all the trucks will be inside, um, so, um, there's a work area, right? Work bench area, workroom area, um, so, um, the school, uh, Ms. Nico from the school toward it with, uh, Bill, the resources guy as well, because they've been part of these different conversations throughout the years.
But she know about it.
She was just there for other, for all the conversations that had happened in the past, uh, for that area, so. It's, it's a, it's a great program for us.
Mr. Cody, go, is that?
Yeah.
You did work, you got.
I just have a question, is that listed as a historical building?
I don't know. I don't know if it's listed.
I believe it likely, yes.
It's a whole building.
But, I mean, if we dispose of it, somebody would buy it. I mean, when council Lazlo and I were, uh, uh, together and came before the council many, many, many years ago, we had a buyer for that property, Chris Clark had somebody to buy. Uh, we were gonna take over the water department building, which would have been a great thing for the school facilities and, uh, uh, superintendent's office and everything, but the powers that.
I just want to say the belt that was in that building, is that the belt that's at the Romanian church?
Oh, there you go. Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on? I want to say this deed, I remember something about this deed in my research.
I have her handwritten deed because, uh, the owner of, uh, the property that's next door that had the whole collapse provided. She's got a lot of research on how that whole may put, so she actually get the handwritten deed.
Yeah, there was something on it about, uh, not being able to do certain things with it. But I did learn from a lawyer who helped me work on across the street, was, uh, after a period of time, things changed and they're no longer worth what they intended to be worth at that point in time. So legally, you can't make those changes.
Yeah, I believe that what the, the thing was that if it was no longer a fire station, we'd go back to the, uh, back to Hamilton Wolf. But Hamilton Wolf's no longer, so. That's why, that's why, that's why, that, that's why we would have to have legal look at it and make sure that we do everything right because we're gonna do it correctly.
Because Hamilton Wolf had a fire department of their own. And you were housed, you know, and then actually the Hamilton Wolf firefighting is standing is when they put firefighters there. It was, at one time, there was a truck and an engine that used to be fine because there is, yeah, so.
Mark, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Um, yeah, I mean, our, the move is based around, uh, keeping all our trucks inside, which has become a real problem. And obviously today, there's vandalism to buses, parking vehicles outside is a real, um, you know, you take a chance every night. We have a lot of tools in our trucks. They're all service trucks, you know, every person on our staff is a tradesman. So we're all, those trucks are pretty well loaded. Um, not to say that when the end of the night's done, somebody doesn't leave something in the truck. That should be back in the shop. That happens because we have a tight space and certain people deal with certain things. Um, also, we lost our parking for the most part on West Street. So if we park on West Street, we block off venture services, you know, front entrance door there, which I didn't feel would be appropriate. So we only parked two there, the other two guys park on High Street, one of which had a tree fall on the truck. That National Grid still won't deal with, uh, but that's for another matter. We have the, uh, we've started supplying the entire town in the last year and a half. We've supplied the entire town now with more, with complete cleaning, paper products, all the chemicals. The town had gotten away from it for a few years between the town and the school. And we've now given copy paper, town hall takes copy paper, didn't take it from us before, they did their own deal. The library, we supplied the library with copy paper. There's a lot of stuff that comes out of the shop right now. We bring half of the cleaning products upstairs to then bring them back downstairs. That's basically the definition of insanity. Um, also, there's, our supplies are at two separate places, so trying to keep, uh, um, order and a direct account of what you have is sometimes a nightmare. So the goal, Rich gave me the opportunity to look it over, um, and he was very good and willing to accommodate us and help us out and give us the space that we needed. I mean, um, you know, we won't know till we get there, one of those things, if we have to make adjustments. But, um, we work really well together, like I said, uh, community center, that, uh, boilers at the DPW, I mean, there's other stuff going on that we've been working on together, that, uh, a bunch of different projects. So I don't see a problem, I see it being a safer environment for my guys. Rich, you any?
Just to compare with what Mark said, we've been working together on a lot of projects in the last six, eight months. We've developed a great relationship. You know, this, uh, this superior's a bit surprised at the fact that, you know, if there's an issue, he says, I'll just talk to Rich and figure it out, he comes to me or he calls to me, we have a conversation, we come up with a reasonable solution. We go forward, there's no, no back and forth, there's not, we're just, we're out, we're, everybody in our environment, DPW, we're building a team. We're trying to make sure that everything in this town can work the best that we can, most adequately for the town. And there's a lot of stuff that needs to get done, so, you know, we'll take all the help we can get. You know, there's still gonna be the school department, we're, we're still gonna help them as DPW, they're still gonna help us as school department, so.
Nice to see.
I think, I think, uh, I'm sorry, I think, uh, Jack, you can attest this. Centralized services always works better for the town. Our problem in the past was the chemistry of the gentleman. And I had to say on DPW's side, in school's side, we had DPW say, oh, you only get a twelve by twelve space, that's the school department. We're saying, whoa, you know, do you know what we do? So it never worked out, but I gotta say, tribute to, to, to both of you guys. You can make that work, it's good for the town.
And they'll have full access, you know, be able to go remote control whenever they have to go into the building. So it's just, it's, it's one big town department, that's what would work.
Centralized services.
So it's pretty much standard building, we go back to the town, winterize it by June, since June this year.
Yeah, we put June just because.
Soon as I get out, I mean, I mean, that's kind of, that's in my wheelhouse, so.
They'll, they'll winterize it right away, but because of our budgets, the way we have it right now, um, you know, it's still, uh, we still have some, a little bit of electricity, electricity because we gotta maintain power for some supplies till we clean everything out, so.
You have to keep the water on at all, or the heater on the stove?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna shut the water on, I want the meter taken out, I'm gonna kill the gas within the next month. Um, and everything else will be, you know, probably like, I'll blow some through because it's pretty old. Put some in the traps just in case, even though it can be much longer, but it would be my luck that.
And I've already talked to, uh, Peg about, uh, working for an RFP to get that out there.
But it'll be, it's, it's gonna be winterized so that if this carries on into the winter of this year, we'll be all summer ready.
Two, two more time to sell it.
Well, uh.
Ballpark, not gonna hold it.
We'll do legal first, hopefully within, as soon as possible, you know, if we get the RFP ready.
You see it going before the end of year?
Uh, I would hope that we could get it out, but, because, you know, we, we would auction it per se, we would do an RFP. Hey, we got this property, whoever gives us the best deal.
Either we're gonna save a ton of money having a lot of year out, we don't have to pay no fee.
All right, anything else? All right, all's in favor? O's, five zero? Most, oh, I just want to bring up, we, uh, to the DPW, myself and George sat down with Rich and Hannah. Um, Hannah, just the other day, gave us, uh, almost two hours of good time, um, and it was a great conversation, we talked about the pavement plan, but I also know there's accounting issues of that, and we walked into that as well. Take a lot of the questions that George had asked, uh, Rich responded in time really quickly. We talked about the personnel issues, we talked about the budget issues. Uh, our biggest thing was what are major projects do we have in town that are coming up that, you know, we need to make sure that gets on there besides the smaller pavement management plan, sidewalk plans and all that kind of stuff. So it was a real good conversation to have and if anybody wants to sit down with Rich, right, not to take your time anymore, but any from the DPW lot, maybe we can set something up with that.
I just want to know what's going on on Main Street. We had a punch list after they were complete. And from what I understand, time is running out on that.
So the conversation came up about the structures that were called out as low. Uh, so we were given basically kind of the ultimatum from the contractor. Do you want us to come back in and rip up your new street again? Or is there something that we can do to pacify the situation? So my, my standpoint on that was that the amount of concern for the few structures that would probably cost a very nominal amount of money down the road to raise if they did become a worse issue. Um, there's not something that I would want to rip the road back up for or cut into a new road. Um, they were gracious enough to eat the additional cost for the asphalt on the project. Um, so that was kind of the deal that was struck between myself, the engineering firm, contractor. Jack and I discussed it, it was open up the new road again, have another seam or make them eat them out. There's probably two or three structures that may be of concern moving forward.
Take care.
All right, motion adjourned.
I'll make that motion.
Right here. All's in favor? O's?